Welcome, everyone. Good evening. I am Mitzi Hunter, your MPP for Scarborough-Guildwood, and welcome to our live virtual Town Hall for February 2021. We have such a wonderful evening set out for you tonight with our special guest, Dr. Isaac Bogash. But first, let's hear greetings from your local representatives. We'll start with John McKay.
Thank you, Mitzi, and I too am looking forward to this evening with Dr. Bogash. We've seen him on television quite frequently, becoming a media darling. And I'm quite keen on hearing his answers to the questions. I love his practical approach to what is a very serious issue for our nation and for our province and for our community. So I think we're in for a real treat tonight.
Great. councillor Ainsley.
Thanks, Mitzi. Good evening. I'm councillor Paul Ainsley, the city councillor for 424 Scarborough-Guildwood. It's great to be here again at our monthly Town Hall meeting. Looking forward to hearing from Dr. Bogash. I see him on the news often. Earlier before we started, I always appreciate his answers. They're very direct, easy to understand and comprehend. And I'm looking forward to hearing from the residents this evening of Scarborough-Guildwood about what your concerns around mainly COVID are and how we can help you. Thank you. Back to you, Mitzi.
Thank you. Thanks so much. And it's wonderful to have our special guest, Dr. Isaac Bogash, particularly on a day like today when we have received new vaccine news and updates. And I know it is on everyone's mind, when will they receive the vaccine? So it is my pleasure, on behalf of all of the representatives here, to welcome Dr. Isaac Bogash, the Associate Professor at the University of Toronto in the Department of Medicine, and an infectious disease consultant and general internist at the Toronto General Hospital with a focus on tropical diseases, HIV, and general infectious diseases. He completed his medical school and internal medicine residency training at the University of Toronto, and then specialized in infectious disease at Harvard University. He holds a master's degree in clinical epidemiology from Harvard School of Public Health. And I know from speaking to Dr. Bogash today that he is still doing rounds in hospital, because he took a few minutes to talk to me and getting ready for tonight's virtual Town Hall. And we so appreciate your time. We know that you have so many other things that you could be doing, but you've chosen to spend it here with us and with our constituents and residents in Scarborough-Guildwood. So welcome, Dr. Bogash, and over to you just for a few minutes to greet everyone on the call.
So thanks very much, Mitzi. That's very, very kind. Thanks for the introduction. Paul and John, thank you as well for having me here as well. Look forward to chatting with everyone tonight. Hopefully, we can get through all the questions. And as always, you know, I'll do my best to answer them, and we'll get through as many as we can. Looking forward to this. And I really appreciate the opportunity to chat. I think, too, you know, what might not come across, depending on what questions come in, I know it's been a busy day. I technically was supposed to look some of these over, and I hadn't because I was working in the hospital all day. So just calling out this story. But one of the things, if it's not asked, is, you know, what's this, what's the next, what are the next few months going to look like? You know, people want to know when they're going to get the vaccines. I'm sure we'll talk about that. But remember, whatever we talk about today, the take home point is 2021 is going to get better. And even though it started off on a pretty sour note, even though we started off with over, you know, 3,000 new cases per day in Ontario, we're doing okay. We're not where we need to be. We're still, you know, still got a lot of work ahead. We're still seeing around 1,000 new cases per day, but that's clearly a lot better than over 3,000 new cases per day. You know, there's variants of concern that are here. There's various stages of reopening. We've got to be very, very careful over the next couple of months. But whether or not there's a third wave, whether or not there's a third wave lit, like a smaller wave, or a big wave, or no wave, regardless of what happens, as we move from spring into summer, things really are going to get better and better and better. As we, the weather warms up, I know it's funny to talk about weather in Canada working in our favor, but it actually will. As it gets warmer, there's just fewer indoor contacts. You magnify that at a population level. That's really going to help. And more and more and more of us are going to get vaccinated. So it really will get better as we move throughout the 2021 calendar year, despite how things might have looked in early January, despite there may or may not be a third wave, things are going to get better. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll hand it back over to Mitzi.
Thank you so much. And let's, let's talk a little bit about today's announcement. And, you know, the first question that we have for you is from Gloria. And she's 70 years old and wants to know when she will receive the vaccine. I know from today's announcement that it's May, I believe, May 1, individuals aged 70 and over are eligible. Can you put into context for us about today's announcement so that people can sort of settle their mind as to when they will be receiving the vaccine?
Okay, so what's interesting is you heard a lot today. You heard some numbers, some ages, and some dates. Just take everything you heard with a gigantic grain of salt, okay? Nothing is set in stone. This is what you have. These are tentative, keyword tentative dates, based on the two vaccines that we have approved right now, the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine. Remember, those are vaccines that are a bit tricky to use. One needs a minus 20 freezer, one needs a minus 80 freezer. So it's not, they're not the easiest vaccines. It's not the same as a flu shot. So if those are the only two vaccines we have, and they're not going to be, but if those are the only two vaccines we have, we'll start vaccinating community dwelling individuals over the age of 80 by mid-March. We'll start vaccinating people over the age of 75 by mid-April. We'll start vaccinating people over the age of 70 by early, early, early May. And then we'll start vaccinating people in their 60s by June. Now, is that really the timeline? Again, it's COVID world, so every, you can't hold my feet to the fire, but very likely not. It's very likely all going to be shifted upward with much earlier timelines. Why? Because we've got three other vaccines that are in the works with Health Canada about to be approved: AstraZeneca, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and Novavax. The first on the chopping block, maybe that's the wrong word. The next one that's likely to be approved is AstraZeneca, okay? But all three of those vaccines are very different than the ones that are already approved, because you don't need a minus 20 or a minus 80 freezer. You can deliver those and administer them in primary care clinics, your family doc, the pharmacy on the corner. Like, they're just way easier to work with. Plus, you have way more access to vaccines. That shifts all those dates up. So, short story long, pardon me, if you're 70 years old, based on today's announcement, you would say, you know, maybe it's going to be May. But in reality, it might actually be earlier than that.
That's wonderful news, Dr. Bogash. So Chris wants to know if the timelines for the development of the vaccines are safe. And I think that, you know, everyone, especially our folks in Scarborough, want to make sure that the vaccine is safe and that there is no need for hesitancy.
Yeah, I love this question, because there's a couple of points here. The first is that, remember that the technology that's been used to develop these vaccines has been around for a long, long time, like, a long, long time. So people say, oh, this is new. It's not new. There's nothing new about it. The virus is new. The technology to develop the vaccines is not new. So that's the first point. So you're already hitting the ground running. The second thing is, yep, they were able to, with, you know, pretty impressive science and funding and prioritizing science, were able to rapidly produce a vaccine. But then you've got to test the vaccine. And when you're testing vaccines in humans, you have to do the appropriate process. And that process involves a phase one clinical trial, that's a small trial in people to make sure you get the right dose, and you check safety. A phase two clinical trial, that's a bit of a bigger trial in people to make sure that you check safety and to make sure your immune system's doing what it's supposed to be doing. And then you do a much larger phase three clinical trial. That's where you check, of course, safety, notice, safety, 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 all in phase one, phase two, and phase three. And then you actually check to see if the vaccine works. Does it actually prevent you from getting the infection? Those trials, for example, those phase three clinical trials involve tens and tens of thousands of people, okay? The Moderna vaccine trial had 30,000 people. Pfizer vaccine trial had 43,000 people. And then, of course, above and beyond those trials, you've got to pass independent health regulatory bodies, Health Canada here at home, FDA in the United States. This is how all drugs and all vaccines come to market. There's no shortcuts. This is the exact same process. There is no corners cut. This is how it's come to be. So yeah, I am confident that the process is sound. I recommend that people get it when it's their turn. The other interesting thing, too, is there's the phase one, phase two, phase three clinical trials. They've also, like, if you look at just to our neighbors in the South, they're giving 2 million doses per day of vaccination. So, like, there's also real world experience with this as well. So there's tens and tens and tens of millions of people that have been vaccinated with this. They're tracking side effects and adverse outcomes. It's not, you know, and so within the clinical trials and the real world experience, it's pretty clear that these are very safe, and actually very effective vaccines.
Talk a little bit more about that effectiveness. We've got lots of questions here, Helen, Mary, who are wanting to know about reinfection, about the variants, and the effectiveness of the vaccines on those mutations. And do we need to get an annual shot? Like, do you know all of this at this point in time?
Yeah, so they have a very good question. There's a couple of components to that. The first component is that all viruses mutate. That's what they do. They just change with time. And remember, just because it mutates, it doesn't mean it gets worse or more significant or more severe or more contagious. A few mutations might make that happen, but not all of them. The second point is that, yep, there are variants of concern. So the virus has changed with time, and there's a few of these floating around that either make the virus a little more contagious, or they make the virus less responsive to the vaccines. That happened. That's here in Canada. It's elsewhere in the world. It kind of comes as no surprise, because that's what viruses do. The third point is that, even with those changes, the vaccines that we actually have available in Canada still work against those variants of concern. Some of them work better than others, but they still all have efficacy, meaning they'll still, number one, prevent the likelihood of you getting the infection. Number two, if you're unlucky enough to get the infection, they reduce the risk of you getting a severe infection. The third thing, which is pretty interesting, is there's growing data suggesting that if you get the infection, you're vaccinated, not only would you have a less severe infection, but you're also probably less likely to transmit the virus to other people. So variant or no variant, these vaccines seem to be doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. And obviously, that's good news. The last point that they had was, you know, are we going to need an annual vaccine? And the answer is, we have no idea. We don't know. We're not sure how long immunity lasts from the vaccine. And you've got to be open and honest and transparent. We don't have all the answers. This is actively being studied, but we don't know just yet. You might need a booster vaccine. You might need an updated vaccine to keep up to date with emerging variants that are evolving through time, you know, and whether that's once a year or once every two or three years, we don't know. But when I know, you know. Also, we'll keep you posted.
Can we get, Mary wants to know, can we get reinfected once we have?
Absolutely, you can get reinfected. So many people might have been infected with COVID-19 and have recovered. Reinfection can certainly happen. It starts to happen, it's not common, but it can start to happen at about the three month mark. But really, it's a little bit more common at about five months onward. There's been several credible cases of reinfection. And believe it or not, if we were talking 20 years ago, eh, 10 years ago, if we were talking 10 years ago, you'd say that getting an infection, recovering from the infection is the best immunity to a virus. Like, the vaccine, don't get me wrong, vaccines are amazing and they help. But now vaccines have what's called an adjuvant in them. And the adjuvant really helps you prime a strong immune response to the virus. So while people can get reinfected about three to five months after they recover from the, from the virus, it's very likely that getting the vaccine will provide a much longer time period of protection compared to natural infection. There's an asterisk behind this, because I don't actually know the answer to that, but there's data pointing in that direction.
Great. I'm going to see if either John or Paul have questions for you. We do have many questions that have come in before the start, as well as live questions. So, John, over to you.
Well, I did, I did have a question about the process of recognizing the efficacy of a vaccine over, from Health Canada. And it does seem to be a bit of a slow roll. But I liked your, your answer that it's safety, safety, safety. And it has, it has crossed my mind is that Health Canada seems to, quote unquote, a little slow. I'm not quite sure that's, that's true. But the grief that I'm getting these days as a practicing politician, practicing federal politician, is people coming from abroad and, and feeling that they should have exceptions to the, to the program for isolation when they come, come into the country, whether they have to go to a hotel or something of that nature. And I'd be interested in your thoughts. The Prime Minister has been pretty blunt about "don't travel." He's been pretty blunt from since now. "Don't travel." And, but a lot of my emails are, "but they shouldn't apply to me." So I'd be interested in your thoughts as those who are coming back, that are coming back to the country, whether they're snowbirds or coming back from other parts of the world, as to why they have to, must adhere to the protocols set up by the government.
Yeah, so that's a great point. It's really interesting, because it dates back pretty far. It dates back to March of 2020, when the Public Health Agency of Canada explicitly stated, "avoid all unnecessary travel." Like, it doesn't get more clear than that. And they've only stated this time and time and time again, for now, almost an entire year. Avoid all unnecessary travel. Like, there is zero ambiguity to that statement. That means you should be avoiding all unnecessary travel. Now, what's interesting is, now there's teeth toward that statement. And we've seen tightening up of restrictions at the border. So in order to help facilitate people avoiding all unnecessary travel, there's now policies in place that probably dissuade many people from traveling to begin with, because you're going to be in a hotel for three days at your expense, for the most part, not always, when you return. So the whole point of tightening up the border was to at least slow down variants of concern from entering the country, and at least slow down travel-related COVID from entering the country. If we want to be totally transparent here, travel-related COVID was actually a very small proportion of cases, like, less than 10%. Like, it really didn't account for that many cases. However, it wasn't 0% of cases. And on top of that, variants of concern got, got into the country. But it wasn't that we were open willy-nilly either. You still had the Quarantine Act, which I think people, I don't know, I mean, like, it wasn't, again, it's not perfect, but that shielded us significantly for the last year from, from infection. Of course, it wasn't perfect. We have variants of concern in the country, and they came here from people who have traveled. And now they're encroaching on, on Canadian soil. They're, they're spreading. But, I mean, I think it's pretty clear. The rules are the rules are the rules. And unless you're an essential worker coming back for essential work, by and large, those rules apply to you. So, I mean, I think the other thing to consider here is, those rules aren't for forever, right? There is going to be an off-ramp to this. I'm not sure when that off-ramp's going to happen, but you can imagine, we're not going to stay under lock and key for eternity, right? When enough Canadians are vaccinated, and we can protect Canadian soil, you know, we might certainly see, we will definitely see a softening up of those measures. But you've heard about today what the vaccine rollout's going to look like in Ontario. You've also heard the federal government state time and time again that it's very, very likely that anyone who wants a vaccine will be able to get a vaccine by the late summer or by, you know, September. I think based on all the, not just what we're hearing from the government, but what we're hearing from the companies themselves, that's a very, I mean, that's a, that's a very attainable goal. So, you know, we'll probably see some of the softening of those measures, I imagine, you know, I'm just guessing here, but like, summer, late summer, you're not going to, you know, when enough, when enough of us are vaccinated, are you really going to make people stay in quarantine hotels? I doubt it. But let's see what they do. But for now, it really is to prevent the influx of variants of concern. They're already here. It just slows it down. So, you know, no policy's going to be 100% perfect. It provides incremental safety and protection. It's not massive safety and protection. It's just incremental safety and protection. There's, people have value judgments whether or not it's worth it, but that's what it's doing. Was that a political answer for you?
I was going to say, we have, we have a lot of political skin in this particular game. And, and, you know, it's not proper to describe it as a game, but nevertheless, there's, there's significant political consequences that ride on our, on, if you will, your answer that by the 1st of September, we got some reasonable chance that, that things are, that the vaccination is available to everyone who wants a vaccination. So let me, it's always a bad thing to get a doctor into, into politics. Never works. Never works. So let me, let me turn you over to the other politician, to Paul.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Mitzi. And, Doctor, I'm going to take off my politician hat. And, you know, as a parent that has three children, and I know you have children, one of the things that I get asked more often than not is, there's a perceived confusion around what masks you should be wearing at the door, whether you're going shopping or your kids are going to school. And part of that, I, you know, part of that, I think, is, you know, the influx of American news and information we get. But when you send your kids at the door, or your wife's going at the door, what's your preferred mask? Like, there's two layers and three layers, and then there, people talk about filters. What would you, what do you prefer to see your family go at the door wearing?
I love this question. Okay, I think of three things. Number one, put on a mask. Step one. Like, that's just the first step in the most important. Put on a mask if you're going into an indoor setting. That's not your house. Easy peasy. That's, and, and I think we should, now, outdoors. Can you get this virus outdoors? Yes. Is it common to get this virus outdoors? No, not at all. Is it impossible to get this virus outdoors? Of course, it's not impossible. It's just really, really rare. So if you can't separate by two meters in an outdoor setting, you could, you can also wear a mask. But really, the number one rule is, put on a mask when you're, when you're in indoor environment. The second thing is make sure the mask fits, okay? Sit snug over the nose and mouth. Okay, we're not into chin masking, we're onto neck masking. Just make sure it's over your nose and mouth. Easy peasy. And make sure it's snug. A lot of the fuss that we've heard about masks over the last month was related to mask fit. All this talk about double masking and all that stuff, that was essentially just ensuring people had good mask fit. And in fact, this was done by the United States CDC, the head, Dr. Rochelle Walensky, came out and said, whoa, everyone pumped the brakes for a minute on this double masking business. The whole point of that is to make sure you've got a good fit and a good seal over your mouth and nose. Double masking is one of many ways that you can do this. You can also just have a well-fitted mask that does the exact same thing. So that was the flurry about double masking. So number one, put on a mask. Number two, make sure it fits well over your mouth and nose. And number three, you should also be wearing higher caliber masks. So it's not acceptable to have, like, t-shirt material over your mouth and nose. Something is better than nothing, okay? Something is better than nothing. But if you go on, for example, the Public Health Agency of Canada's website, easy peasy. Public Health Agency of Canada's website has all the details on what a high-quality mask should be, a high-quality cloth mask, three layers, you're good. They talk about a little filter in there. Again, you don't even have to get too technical, and you, you can buy these anywhere. Like, they are widely available in drugstores and, you know, pharmacies and stores everywhere, widely available. I don't have one on me. Usually, I have a million masks around me. You can also wear what's called like a surgical mask. They're everywhere as well. They'll do just fine. So I'm not picky. The things I'm picky about are, put on a mask for the, the first place. And we, it's not a huge problem in Canada, not like in the United States, but you still see some people who are a little resistant. Make sure it fits over the mouth and nose, and also wear a high-quality mask.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That's awesome. And I want to remind everyone that is viewing this live broadcast that you can ask questions directly of Dr. Isaac Bogash. We are so lucky to have him with us this evening for the next half an hour, 35 minutes in fact, to be able to answer your questions. So please put your, your questions into the chat, and we will try to get to as many of them as possible. Dr. Bogash, you know, one of the things that we wanted to, to really understand was, you know, the flu shot this year was, was given out, but we haven't really heard much about the flu. And it seems to have just, you know, become a non-factor, and COVID has taken over. Can you talk a little bit about how these two infections are coexisting in Ontario?
Yeah, this is pretty incredible. So flu is the biggest non-story of the year, and thankfully so, because every year, you know, it's, it's not really fair to make comparisons. People say, oh, COVID's, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's the flu, it's, it's way worse than the flu. Like, people are sort of underplaying the flu. COVID's really bad. But guess what? So is influenza. Influenza kills about 3,500 Canadians every year. Influenza kills about a half a million people on Earth per year. And it comes up year after year after year. Like, influenza stinks. Not, nothing, I'm not comparing the two. Influenza's terrible. Now, this year, we've had virtually no influenza. There's been a few cases, but very, very few. Why is that the case? The answer is, you know, the best answer in medicine. It's multifactorial. That's what you say when you don't actually know the answer to this off possible things, okay? It's multifactorial. So here's the reasons. Number one, we had historic uptake of the influenza vaccine this year. Remember when people are scrambling to get this, and everyone's mudslinging at the government, oh, they didn't order enough? No, they did order enough. Everyone who wanted one got one, but it didn't all happen all at once. But they did order, I think it was, I'm just going to, I think it was 700,000, they ordered a lot more than they normally did. There were shortages at times, for sure. But if you ended up, if you wanted a vaccine, you definitely got a vaccine. So there was record high vaccination. Number two, everyone's wearing a mask and washing their hands. That certainly helps. Physical distancing, mask-wearing, hand hygiene, like, these public health measures really, really help. And that's, helps with the spread of other infectious diseases as well, including the flu. The third thing, which is pretty interesting, that I don't think gets discussed enough, is international travel is a drop in the bucket. It's not zero, but it's a drop in the bucket. And if you did come into Canada, you had to quarantine. So we're probably importing way, way, way less flu, and there's probably just way less flu circulating around the globe. So there's probably, it probably really is multifactorial. A great story, because we were very concerned, remember the stories in September, is this going to be the twin-demic? You're going to have flu and COVID, and the hospital system was going to be stretched beyond capacity. Well, instead, we just had COVID, and the hospital system was stretched beyond capacity. But at least we didn't have competing influenza at the same time, which would have been a disaster.
Can we talk a little bit about where people will be receiving their vaccine? And I'm going to actually ask councillor Ainsley, who does currently sit on the Board of Health, in terms of, is there anything that, that you can share in terms of mobile clinics? Or there, apparently, there are these super clinics that will be set up, a couple in Scarborough. Can you tell people just what you know about where they will receive the vaccine at the local level? Councillor Ainsley. I, I'm going to start with councillor Ainsley, and then I'm going to come back to, to you, Dr. Bogash.
He's on mute.
Mute!
Yes, yes.
Nine months in.
The curse of the 21st century.
There we go. So I was going to say, so the city of Toronto, we have nine designated vaccine centers across the city. They're across the city geographically. So Scarborough, the Scarborough Civic Centre is one we're going to be using. It's traditionally where people also go through public health to get their flu shots. And then we're envisioning, once we have adequate supplies, that will be distributed across the city, pretty much like, you'll get the flu shot that Dr. Bogash was just talking about. So doctors' offices, we're envisioning more flu clinics opening than just the nine we have, but you'll be able to go to your doctor's office, the local pharmacy. We're looking at pop-up clinics. There's been some talk about drive-through vaccination clinics. I don't think anything's off the table. Our number one priority is to make sure everybody gets Our number-one priority is to make sure everybody gets vaccinated. Uh, as, you know, as readily as the, the vaccine supply becomes available, that's our number-one goal. We want everybody vaccinated as quickly as possible.
Great. And um, do you have any things to comment on with regards to receiving the vaccine, Dr. Bogash?
Well, firstly, I hope people accept it when it becomes available, I really do. They're safe and effective, and it, you know, I know we're not supposed to say it's the silver bullet and it's our way out of this pandemic, but it's the silver bullet and that's our way out of the pandemic. So I really hope people accept the vaccine. The more of us that get it, the better it is for you and your family and the community and, and the country. The second thing is, we're currently dealing with a minus twenty and a minus eighty product. It's, it's just, it's just more challenging. It's not a flu shot, it's just a little more challenging. And of course, everyone needs two shots, not one, with the current shots that we have available. That's why you're gonna see them mostly delivered in mass vaccine centers and community centers, because it's just easier to administer them there. You'll also see about ten to twenty percent of them administered in pharmacies. But as we get more access to other vaccines, including AstraZeneca, Johnson &amp; Johnson and/or Novavax, those are much easier products to, to handle, they only require conventional refrigeration. So once we get access to those products, you'll start to see them delivered in additional places, for example, in your primary care, uh, primary care clinic. And, and, and so essentially, all the plans, if you look at all the public health units in Ontario, they all have some combination of mass vaccine sites, uh, community centers, which are not necessarily mass vaccine sites, they're community centers. And, and just calling it how it is, there's some communities that don't have the same level of trust in healthcare and the government because of years and years of neglect. And if they're more comfortable going to community centers, actually Scarborough has several of those uh, for, for the black community that are gonna pop up, it's fantastic. Like, this is what it's there for, build trust with the community, ensure people feel good about coming out to get the vaccine, and, and empower people to go and get the vaccine. So mass vaccine sites, community centers, pharmacies, those will be primarily uh, in the early uh, mass vaccine rollout, and then add, and then gradually more with uh, primary care clinics. The other thing too is you will see mobile trucks. Many, uh, many parts of the province will use mobile trucks to help, more help with, you know, underserviced, underhoused homeless populations as well.
So that's, that's really great. And Tyvo Community Health Centre, I know, um, I was on a town hall with them last night. They are gearing up um, and hiring nurses to help administer those vaccines at their community health centre in Malvern. Um, I, I want to ask you this question because uh, I really believe that this group is a champion in our community, and it's a, a, a life lease building um, populated by seniors, uh, most of whom are, or eighty percent of whom are over the age of eighty. And um, and so they live in this sort of um, very close proximity with each other. And, and they wanna know, it's called Mazarick Town, they wanna know if a vaccine clinic would actually come to their site to set up to do the vaccination, to make it easier on uh, seniors and those who live in, in those uh, types of uh, settings.
Before I ponder this off on Paul, the uh, the, one of the things that this question highlights is that with mass vaccine sites and with uh, the products that we currently have available, it's harder to bring the vaccine to the people. It is. And this is mostly the vaccines that we have now are vaccines where you bring the people to the vaccine, which of course is not ideal when you're dealing with uh, signing up online, uh, calling in to schedule an appointment, right? You can see there's barriers to care. Language barriers, technology barriers, mobility barriers, cultural barriers, there's, there are barriers to care. And this is truly why it takes a village, right? It really takes a village. We all, you know, we've heard we're all in it together, we actually are all in it together. We've gotta look after one another. So families, caregivers, neighbors, community-based organizations. We all, now is the time to pitch in. If you know someone who's eighty years of age and older, you know they're gonna be able to get the vaccine probably sometime in mid-March. They might need help signing up, they might need help getting to the vaccine clinic. This is for us to do together as a community, okay? That, we really need to buckle down and do this, and help our family, our friends, our neighbors out. And, and, and this truly is shared responsibility. Uh, because there will be barriers, but there's nothing that we can't overcome if we help each other out here. So with that, I'll pass it on to Paul, who's gonna tell these nice folks that the vaccine's coming to their building.
This is a Jay Rowan question, isn't it?
Yeah, and, and I, and I think that that's part of the confusion around when you have, so in the news you see long-term care homes are getting the vaccine, um, staff in the next phase are getting the vaccine. And then we have the areas like Mazarick Town that have a high number of seniors that are, you know, we have the same number of seniors as a long-term care home, why aren't we getting the vaccine? Well, you know, it's a different facility, there's more independent living. Um, but you know, Toronto Public Health certainly understands congregant settings like that. And, you know, they will be vaccinated as, as soon as possible.
So Mitzi, Mitzi, I wanted Dr. Bogash to answer a question that I'm supposed to answer, uh, because I think his answer will actually be more interesting than my answer. So uh, you know, if, if, if we're playing bouncy ball, he bounces it over to Paul, I wanna bounce it back to him. So, so uh, what the pandemic has uh, exposed is our woeful dependency on supply chains. Um, and, you know, simple supply chains like PPE, uh, but also the more complicated supply chain of um, vaccine production. We have very limited domestic production capacity. And um, a lot of people are writing to me, and, and in fact, this is a conversation in our caucus, as to why in heaven's name and how did we arrive at having limited domestic capacity to produce our own vaccines? Um, and uh, you know, the other countries around the world certainly have retained that capacity, and we haven't. So I'd be interested, not only your answer as to how we got into this mess that we're in, uh, knowing, having limited or no domestic uh, capacity, but be your thoughts as to um, where we might uh, go with respect to um, uh, the development. I know there's some prop, proposal that much, a place in Montreal be, um, be set up. But I'd be interested in your thoughts on the, on the overall domestic capacity issue.
Okay, I love this question. Um, and thank you for punting it my way. It's a very important question. And just fully recognizing that I am sitting on a call with several politicians, this is not a political answer, I'm not picking sides, this is just the answer. The reason we don't have the same degree of vaccine production capability in Canada is because of years and years of not funding and supporting it. So everyone likes to point at the current government, and I'm not here to defend or throw anyone under the bus, but this is predates any current government's issue. This, there, there really were years and years of not funding or supporting local Canadian scientists and local kid, and local industry to produce uh, vaccines, to develop and produce vaccines. Now, there is some, what?
Which level of government are you talking about?
Oh, come on, come on, come on.
I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not saying it was you. It, this is predates your government by.
He's very sensitive.
But yeah, but ever. But it's, but so what, but the issue is, you know, it takes years to develop this, and we just didn't have it at the time. So, you know, it doesn't mean we didn't have zero capacity, we just had limited capacity. So credit where credits do, a very smart decision was made. And that smart decision was, listen, we need to rely on foreign companies and, and foreign countries to get access to vaccines. And they put together a task force, I wasn't on it, I'm not praising myself whatsoever, uh, to say like, which ones are gonna be the winners? And they bet on winners, like Pfizer, Moderna. I mean, who would bet on an mRNA vaccine? We've never had mRNA vaccines. Winner, winner, those are the first two vaccines that were um, approved. And, you know, they, and they've not just passed their phase-three clinical trial, they knocked it out of the park. Ninety-four percent efficacy, like, that's incredible for a respiratory virus? Talk about setting the bar high. Okay, Johnson &amp; Johnson, AstraZeneca, Novavax, winner, winner, winner. So you bet on winners, so smart task force. There's a little can Cino thing that didn't work out, but we don't need to talk about that. But the uh, the other ones were fantastic, like, they really were fantastic. Now, simultaneous with that, they said, okay, we recognize this is a health security issue, because it is a health security issue, you need to supply your own vaccines, clearly. So pump money into that plant in Montreal that's gonna produce Novavax, great. It's not gonna help us today, but it's certainly gonna help us later on. Uh, so it's gonna probably start in the fall producing vaccine, that's gonna be extremely helpful to us, not just for this current, you know, pandemic, but also for, you know, on, ongoing vaccine-related things that we're gonna need. Plus, we have a few Canadian startups, a few Canadian companies that are developing mRNA vaccines and other vaccines. So support starts now, but it should be an apolitical process that that is ongoing. It's just, it, it's, it, it's clearly an essential, a, a, an essential need, and this pandemic highlighted it. But also, credit where credits do, you bet on winners, you got winners. Um, and while the vaccine rollout is slow, just wait, it's not a race to the end of the, to the end of the beginning. It's, it's, you know, let's look at the midterm results, let's look at the end result. If, if all, again, everyone will come up with their own value judgment, their own conclusions. In my mind, if everyone who wants a vaccine is vaccinated by September, I chalk that up as a win. That, that's my value judgment, people might see it differently. And quite frankly, I, I don't see that being a problem based on the vaccines that we have available to us now, and based on the vaccines we'll have available to us throughout, the, the rest of the year. But anyways, that's what I think of that.
Take that one, John.
Well, that, that was the smartest, that was the smartest punt I'd made in a long time. His answer's way better than ever I could come up with, I'd be, I'd be flopping around on that. But it just, just the, the, the little follow-up here, because I don't wanna belabor this point. Um, is the manufacture of a vaccine, uh, or having the capacity to manufacture vaccines in this country, um, I, I buy the argument that it's, it's a security issue. I buy the argument that it's a, a health efficacy issue. Um, is it a financially sensible, uh, proper deployment of scarce resources?
Yes. Yes, but I don't know entirely what I'm talking about, and I'm out of my element here. But yes, because he, I'm a, uh, here's me being a fish out of water. Um, I sus, I'm gonna be very careful with my words. I suspect it is. I suspect it is because not just, you're gonna need that on an ongoing basis, you are. Uh, you're gonna need to produce vaccines on an ongoing basis, we're gonna need updates to this vaccine. We already know that the major pharmaceutical companies are already making updated, uh, updated vaccines to account for the emerging variants of concern globally. We will definitely be needing a booster vaccine and an updated vaccine. I don't know how many we'll need uh, moving forward and how often that will be required, but it's definitely gonna be required. The other thing is COVID-nineteens aren't going anywhere. I'm not saying it's gonna be here for forever, but I'm saying it's gonna be here for a long, long time, measured in years and years and years. Uh, because, just because Canada's all vaccinated by September, doesn't mean the rest of the world is gonna be vaccinated. And this is gonna be circulating in, you know, maybe in low levels in Canada, but in many other parts of the world for years to come. So we, there will be variants emerging, we will likely need updated vaccines. I mean, obviously, you gotta look at the cost benefit and, and, and the cost effectiveness of a program like this, and even the cost savings to be technical, uh, producing it locally versus relying on foreign companies. But I suspect it is both from a cost that, uh, cost benefit, uh, uh, sorry, cost effectiveness and a cost-saving standpoint, I bet it's, I bet it's winner in both of them.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you. And sorry, Dr. Bogash, when, when you talk about the different types of vaccines, one of the, you know, I've had questions from residents about, you know, based on age or your, your cultural background, is one type of vaccine better than, than another? Is there any, like, should I be getting like a Moderna? And my mother, who's a senior citizen, getting a Pfizer vaccine? Is there any evidence of one over the other when it comes to age or?
Yeah, good point. So currently now with Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, it's flip a coin. I went, it doesn't matter what you get. They both have very, very similar properties. The only difference with them really is how they're refrigerated. That's basically the only difference, how they're stored and transported. But they function in a very, very similar manner. What's interesting is when we get access to the other ones, because the mRNA vaccines kinda ruined it for everybody else. They're really, really good at preventing infection. Now, don't get me wrong, the other ones are as well. The other ones are actually pretty fantastic at preventing infection. But, but they are not necessarily as good as the, the AstraZeneca and the Pfizer. But that's not entirely a true statement either, because it gets a little technical. When AstraZeneca and Pfizer were being tested, they weren't being tested in an era of variants of concern emerging. So they might look a little bit better than the other ones, which were tested when there were more circulating variants of concern. So the playing field is probably a little bit more level than what the numbers appear. In addition to that, it's many people's belief that even with that leveling of the playing field, there's probably still greater efficacy of the mRNA vaccines compared to the other ones. Having said that, what's the goal here? The goal is prevent yourself from getting infected, all the vaccines do that. Prevent yourself, if you are infected, from having a severe infection, lyming yourself in hospital or dying. All the vaccines do that. And hopefully, prevent onward transmission. It's likely that all or most vaccines will at least lower the risk. In an era of scarce resources, in an era of a truly devastating pandemic, this goes back to what your kids learn in kindergarten. You get what you get, and you don't get upset, okay? Take the first vaccine that becomes available to you, because they're all good. They will all do the job, and we will all probably need a booster vaccine at some point. So it's, I think, from a public health standpoint and from an individual health standpoint, I would get whatever vaccine became available to me, and I would not hold out wanting one or the other. I would just take what I could get at, at this time. You know, listen, there might be a point in, I'm just making this up, September, November, I don't know, later on in the year, where there's gonna be some unvaccinated people, and they're gonna say, oh, you can get a Pfizer here or a AstraZeneca there. And maybe we'll have more knowledge, and they'll say, oh, I'm gonna choose this one over that one. We're not at a level like that, even close to that level yet in Canada. This is get what you get and be happy because they're all gonna do a good job.
So how do we register for the vaccine? And, you know, there's talk of a portal, um, there's gonna be these nine super sites uh, that people can, mass vaccination will happen. So people are, are asking, and also on behalf, we have a lot of seniors in the community asking on behalf of their parents or grandparents, how do they register? Because we know that those who are eighty and up are next in line.
So a couple of things. In mid-March, uh, there is going to be an, two things. One is an online system to sign up, and the second thing is a telephone system to sign up. The online system is, it's, it's the same system, it's the same thing, like a single website, okay? You type in your postal code, and it'll redirect you to wherever you are in Ontario where you need to go. So you, it, it's an easy, single-site signup tool. And not everyone's gonna be able to sign up at the same time, everyone's gonna be curious and wanna go on the website. But I, I, you heard General Hillier today say, don't go on the website if you're not ready to sign up, because then there's gonna be too much traffic, the website's gonna crash. So a single tool to sign up, and, you know, it'll be announced time and time again on mainstream media, on social media, we're signing up people eighty years and up, then we're signing up people seventy-five years and up, then we're signing up people with the following conditions who can sign up. So it's gonna be in a staged and gradual manner. When it's your turn to sign up, you can either go through the online portal, which is a single website, where you, you'll be able to do it, or pick up the phone if you don't have uh, internet, or you're not quite sure how to use the uh, online portal. So both will, will get you to the right place to get the right vaccines at the right time.
And, and we know that public health units are being asked to coordinate this. Um, you know, people have relatives in other places, uh, maybe in the GTA. Is there a coordination or a standard that we can expect uh, in terms of registering for the vaccine?
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure that, like, I don't think I understand the question. Like, the, the public health units are, local public health units are, are certainly driving the vaccine efforts locally. But instead of how, there's thirty-four public health units in Ontario. So instead of people figuring out which, what their name, some people don't even know the name of their public health unit. You know, if you lived in Algoma or something like that, like, many people just say, I, I live in Sudbury, I don't know what I'll go. So, so that's why there's a single system to sign up, where you type in your postal code and it'll direct you exactly. So, so that's why there's a single system to sign up, where you type in your postal code and it'll direct you exactly where you need to go. Uh, so there is that degree of coordination. Um, but, but what happens is there's a single playbook. There's a single provincial playbook, there's a single rulebook, right? We are all doing this in unison, the rules are the same. Here's the priority groups, here's the age groups, here's the people who can sign up, and then we go for it. So, um, there, there actually is a lot of coordination between, uh, the various public health units in Ontario. But you will be vaccinated in the public health unit that's, that you live in. And, and quite frankly, there's going to be vaccine centers that are close to where you live. I mean, many cities will have a bunch of vaccine centers opening up.
Mitzi, I got a, I got a, another good question that has been asked of me that I can now, since he did such a terrific job of, uh, the one, the last one I punted, I think I'll try it again. Uh, but it has to do with the, the controversy over, um, uh, these passports, vaccine passports. And, um, and, you know, I guess you get some sort of something where you get to have a yellow fever, um, inoculation. Um, somehow or another, that's useful. What, what is it that you will get if you have a, a COVID, um, COVID vaccination? And how will people know, uh, that you have it? And, um, how reliable will it be, um, particularly if you're traveling abroad?
So a couple of points. One, short answer is I have no idea. The second answer is whether, whatever we want is almost irrelevant here, because I think this is happening. I think this is happening, right? We can discuss the ethics and the morals and the values behind vaccine passports. I think this is happening globally, whatever we end up deciding within Canada. And as you pointed out, there are, I think, 65 or 68 countries worldwide, like, just precedent for this. You cannot walk into many, many countries on the planet without showing documented evidence of vaccination for an infection called yellow fever. When you land in many countries, in Africa, in Asia, in South America, if you don't have evidence of that, one of two things is going to happen. Number one, they'll say, you're not coming in and you have to purchase the first ticket out of there and fly out of there at tremendous expense. Or number two, you can't proceed in the country unless they give you a shot right at the border there. So they're serious about this. So this has happened before. I suspect we're going to see many countries, and I don't know what Canada's going to do, but I suspect we'll see many countries want to see proof of vaccination. The next thing is, okay, what's the standard? Like, yellow fever is just a flimsy piece of paper, uh, that's a standardized piece of paper. And, and there's no secret that you can forge this, uh, but, um, but it is, it is a flimsy piece of paper. I wonder if we'll be more sophisticated with COVID-19 and if some places will ask for, you know, some digital evidence of vaccination, what you got and when you got it. I just don't know. We have to figure this out as a Canadian community, as a global community. So a lot left to be known. The second thing is within the country, forget international travel. In many school districts, you already have to show proof of vaccination to send your kids to school. So this, again, this already does exist to some extent here in Canada. I can't send my kid to certain sports or hockey or whatever events. I can't send my kids to school without showing proof of measles, mumps, rubella, varicella vaccination. And God help you, should you not have it. You're going to get a call from the school board or the public health unit saying, you don't have this, your kid can't go. Um, it was embarrassing because I got that, even though I, I, my kids are all vaccinated, I forgot that, you know. I got the phone call, which made me embarrassed as an infectious disease physician. So we probably might see it within Canada, we'll certainly see it with international travel. What's being worked out is what will the appropriate level of documentation be? So there's the sort of likely scenario. Here's the other part, the value judgment. I personally think it's okay. I think it's smart. I think international travel, you know, there's many countries that are going to be very vulnerable to COVID-19 because they might be slower on the uptake of vaccinations for a variety of reasons. They want to decrease the likelihood of importing vaccinate, uh, importing virus into their country. We know how devastating this can be. I would not be surprised if countries will, will, will want to see proof of vaccination prior to entry. And I completely support that. Uh, it, it could devastate a population. Um, so why import cases if you can prevent it? So I, I'm, I'm all for it, just like for yellow fever. It could be such a devastating infection if it's imported, so can COVID-19.
But I, I think really the, the number one priority for us right now, I don't think, you know, for me, international traveler, traveling anywhere is so far down the list. I'm more worried about, I want everybody in my family vaccinated. I want to be able to go to the store safely and do my grocery shopping. Um, I, I would think, Dr., we're a long way from international travel for a large amount of the population, wouldn't you think?
Paul? I think it's a lot closer than many of us think it is. And I think we've got to start thinking about it now, because this is going to sneak up on us really quickly. Like, again, I'm totally speculating here, but what, what happens when summer rolls around? Not everyone's going to be vaccinated, but a lot of people are going to be vaccinated by summer in Canada. People are going to be itching to see family, to go on vacation. Um, and I think we're going to see a much bigger appetite for international travel, not just for recreational travel, but also visiting friends and relatives as well. As vaccine programs roll out, like, these are really going to start scaling massively in April. And come summer, like, I think people are getting scratching at the walls to, 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 to move, to, to travel. Come September, when everybody is likely vaccinated. And like, I know it's February and we've got about a half a foot of snow outside, but like, that's in a weird way, like, if we want to be prepared for that, we got to start now. We actually have to start now, because that's, in, in a sick sort of way, that's kind of right around the corner. Uh, it's basically March, and, and, so yeah, I think we've got to really start thinking about this.
Let's lean into that a little bit, um, Dr. Bogash, in terms of how are we going to be behaving in the midterm? Say, you know, lots of people have had their doses of the vaccine, you know, will they still be wearing a mask? Um, what will life look like? And, and this is coming from, from Mary's, it's a question that was asked of you.
So it's hard to know exactly what life is going to look like, but I think it's fair to say that as more and more and more Canadians are vaccinated, as case numbers gradually peter down, you know, maybe we'll get a third wave, maybe we'll get a little third wave, but we don't know. But throughout the year, wave or no wave, cases are going to head in the downward trajectory. Hospitals are going to be gradually decompressed. ICUs are going to be gradually decompressed. People, as more and more of us get vaccinated, like, it's just going to happen. Um, and hopefully coinciding with that, public health measures will keep up, right? More of us will be protected, our healthcare system, so there'll be more and more people protected. Our healthcare system won't be threatened to be stretched beyond capacity. We'll just be in a position where you can gradually lift public health measures. What does that mean? More and more, uh, people allowed to get together in outdoor environments. More and more people allowed to get together in indoor environments. Mask mandates probably being lifted at some point. Loosening up of the border with the United States, travel restrictions being lifted. Like, it's all going to happen in 2021. It's probably going to happen in a very, in a very gradual manner, but it's going to happen. You're already starting to see it happen. I mean, even in Ontario, there's some areas that are in various, various stages of reopening. We have a color-coded system for, uh, for reopening and it's already starting to happen. Listen, it's not a one-way path towards reopening. We might have to shutter down in a few places if there's an explosive outbreak. But you can sort of see the writing on the wall that things are going to get better and that we're gradually going to lift these measures.
Right. Um, I just really quickly want to.
What's that? I can hear you. Oh, no, now you're on mute.
Sorry, my computer is, uh, taking over here. So, um, there was a question in, in the chat, the live chat about side effects. And are, can you just touch on that, uh, you know, with your expertise on known side effects? Um, and, and speak specifically for seniors as well?
Yeah, it's a good point, and I think it's extremely important that we talk about this, because you've got to know what's going to happen, right? You've got to know what the potential side effects are. You can't be shocked and surprised. Um, some people who are listening might have had what's called the Shingrix vaccine, that's for the shingles. Some people get the Shingrix vaccine and feel fine, other people get the Shingrix vaccine and they feel a little crummy. This vaccine can make you feel a little bit crummy. Uh, not everyone gets it, but some people do. Some people feel nothing at all, but a bit of a sore shoulder. Some people have muscle aches and pains, some people get headaches, some people feel like a little bit like of a flu-like illness. Some people even get a fever. Uh, the vast majority of people have mild symptoms and, and recover fully, and that's the end of that. But you, you, you should expect that that can happen. Um, the other thing too is you're getting two vaccines. So if it happens after the first one, it also might happen after the second one. The other thing is, even if you don't get it after the first one, you still might have those symptoms after the second one. So that, that's not uncommon for this to happen, and, and it's important that people are aware of that. It's extremely rare, like extremely rare, like two to three per million, where people will have an allergic reaction to the vaccine. Uh, so it's an extremely rare, rare, rare event, but it can happen. You should be aware that it can happen. And, uh, in all the vaccine centers, they're prepared. If someone has a very, very rare, severe immune reaction, they can be treated. You have those little shots, the EpiPens there onsite, and everyone there is a healthcare professional. So, you know, they're, they're well poised to, to care for someone, but it's a very rare event. But you should note that it is still a, a possibility.
And, um, just my final, um, uh, question, it, it's unpaid sick leave and, uh, the benefits of that. Um, I, I know it's something that we've been calling for, um, so that we can actually give people a, a protected way if they do contact COVID, um, to, to get better, uh, away from the public. And, you know, for economic reasons in particular, uh, like difficult to not go to work, you know, to make ends meet. So, you know, it's something that you know, I certainly support and, and honestly, um, we, we probably do need to step up with paid sick leave.
Yeah, I mean, I've been pretty vocal about this, uh, for a while. We know that there's communities that are disproportionately impacted not only by the virus, also by policies to primarily lower-income neighborhoods, racialized neighborhoods. Like, there are communities that are feeling the impact way harder than other communities. We know people are essential workers, they have to go to work, they have to go to, or, or they can't afford to not go to work. And, and, you know, you know, we, we often just get a test. Well, some people don't want to get a test. If they get a test and they're positive, that means they got to stay home for, for, you know, 10 to 14 days. You can't afford to stay home for 10 to 14 days. You've got a family to feed, you've got a mortgage. You, so you can't just say, oh, go get a test, right? You, you truly need, you truly need to support, you need to support people. You've got to facilitate, like, this virus really demonstrates a lot of the socioeconomic disparities that, that we have. Um, and, you know, it's, it's awful, but, uh, you know, a, a policy, uh, because you would actually prevent, it would just prevent people who are sick from, from, from going to work. Uh, and, and then infecting others who would then go home and infect their other families. Like, this is how the virus is amplified. So, I, I mean, I've been pretty supportive, uh, and vocal about the, the benefit of something like this, creating safer workplaces. Part of that is, it, it does involve ensuring people have paid sick leave. So, yeah, I think that's a smart approach.
So, Dr. Bogash, um, as we're about to close off, you're a U of T Harvard-educated, uh, infectious disease specialist. How do we prepare for the next pandemic?
Oh, gone an hour? Like, what, you gotta, you gotta give me like more than three seconds for this. So it really requires, here's the high-level answer. Much better global coordination, much better global communication, much better transparency on, and early detection systems in, which requires improving capacity, many people have significant capacity. What is, uh, the improvement in many parts of the world that, that are lower-income countries, but also ensuring that we have global systems to rapidly identify and respond to emerging pathogens that are I mean, that's the million-dollar question. The answer is, I don't know. I truly don't know. Like, even if you had the capacity to rapidly identify it, even if you had more transparency and more coordination, could this have been averted? I would want to say yes. I mean, obviously the optimist and the scientist contagious infection. Measures and, and stuff like that, and they even have outbreaks when someone slips past the goalie, okay? They're not big, but they certainly have them. So, and they're prepared. Imagine what you do when you're not prepared. So could this have been averted? I honestly don't know. I, even with the best systems in place, I honestly don't know. Yeah, we, it certainly wouldn't have had the same horrible impact, but it still would have had an impact, I think. But how do you, so shorter shorter intent systems, building capacity, especially in lower-resourced, lower-income countries, much better global coordination and communication. Those are sort of, that's the Patrick of pandemic prevention.
That's not a million.
Yeah.
Um, it turns out, um, I, I would add to that answer to, to say that we need to shorten our supply chains in Canada, so that, uh, we're, we're, we've got much more, um, national capacity than we do have. And to restore what was the, the world-class, um, uh, detection system that existed at Health Canada for quite a number of years. Um, I think, I think we may be, uh, crop the ball on that.
And own those supply chains as well, uh, including the input ingredients. Um, I think this has been an extraordinary, um, session that we've had with, with you, Dr. Bogash. Um, it's, it's just your knowledge and your experience on the ground. Um, I certainly feel more reassured and hopeful, um, certainly for the medium and the long term uh, with the vaccine and also with the capacity we have in our health systems, uh, here in Ontario and in Scarborough. Uh, so I want to just thank you very much for taking the time to join us this evening. Um, I have to say that, uh, on a personal note, you share, uh, a first name with my father, Isaac. And I happen to know that it means laughter and that you certainly do have a wonderful, warm personality and sense of humor. And I understand that there are things that you enjoy, like long walks and chicken wings. So, uh, not sure if those two combine and come together, but it has been a wonderful, uh, spending this evening with you. Thank you so much for joining us.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me. It's great to chat and, uh, let's keep the conversation going. I think there's going to be a lot of further questions as the vaccines roll out and happy to carry on with the conversation.
You're a standing invitation to come back.
Absolutely. And, uh, perhaps some closing, closing words, uh, John will start with you.
Um, straight-up guy with straight-up answers. Didn't, didn't go into the rope-a-dope, uh, medical legal lan-, uh, medical, uh, language that none of us really understand. Um, I really appreciate, uh, you, Dr. Bogash, for communicating as well as you communicate. It's one thing to have the knowledge, it's another thing to communicate it to those who don't have, um, degrees from, um, University of Toronto and Harvard. Um, and, um, you have bridged that brilliantly, uh, not only in the past, but tonight, so I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bogash. I appreciate all of the information you gave us, uh, this evening. And as I said this morning, uh, uh, my wife very much appreciates, uh, listening to you, to you on the news. You always give straightforward answers that are, uh, easy to understand, very comprehensive. Uh, I want to thank Mitzi and John for, uh, doing another town hall, uh, for all the residents that were listening. I, I will have all the questions and answers that I've been providing. And I know there's, uh, a number of questions we didn't get to, uh, unfortunately. But, uh, I will have answers to all those questions posted on, uh, my website and in my, uh, daily e-news blast that goes out. And I hope everybody's safe and well. And, uh, please follow all of the advice, wear your mask and, uh, follow the protocols and we'll all get through this together. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, everyone, for joining us, uh, once again in our, uh, virtual town hall. It really is, um, has been a great forum for us to come together as a community here in Scarborough to get the facts, get the information. And certainly tonight, Dr. Isaac Bogash. And certainly tonight, Dr. Isaac Bogash, who is a member of the Provincial Task Force on Vaccine Rollout, you have just done an extraordinary job um, telling us, uh, about what is to come and and really reassuring us that there is a single playbook uh, in Ontario and that that rollout is going to happen in a coordinated fashion, and we certainly hope so. So thank you, everyone, for taking the time to tune in and, uh, safe. And when it is your turn for the vaccine, please do get it. It's free and it's safe, and we all need it to stay safe. So, so much, Nessie, and have a great evening. Bye for now.
Bye, everyone.